First up, minutes of June 17. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, errors, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Minutes of the July 15 Select Board Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Any errors, omissions, concerns, spell checks? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Public to speak on non-agenda items. Nathan.
Hello, Nathan Hiltz. As you all know, my crusade is to get the public more engaged. Just recently, I was blessed to have someone share with me an important piece of wisdom related to this subject. I was informed that people only care about something when it affects them directly. This revelation is something that I am still working to process. I'll start out by repeating something I've read here before, but today I'll apply it in a different context. The April 21, 1950 edition of the Wilton Times newspaper featured a report from a committee tasked with exploring the adoption of the town manager reform of government. That report includes a quote from MMA Executive Secretary Lee Weber. Quote, "The principal argument against the town manager reform of government is that it works so well that the town people lose interest in their local government and do not attend meetings where, of course, the major decisions are made." End quote. Those who voted for the town manager system that year surely expected to see certain benefits that would immediately affect them. The psychological affective apathy, however, would not sit in immediately. It's not as if current citizens would change their lifelong habits the day the first manager took office. It would take at least eight generations to see the negative effects. Many of the citizens casting a vote in 1950 didn't expect to be around long enough to be directly affected by those consequences. Fast forward one generation to 1967, when the town voted to give up its high school. The people old enough to cast a vote were conveniently the very same ones old enough that they would never attend said night. Now fast forward a few more generations to the present day. Of the people casting votes in 2025, how many of them care about what impact it will have on the year 2055? I continue to contemplate this revelation about people's supposed inability to care about things that don't directly affect them. It leads me to more questions. Should anyone aspire to care about things beyond what affects them directly? Perhaps only caring about what affects us is for the best, and any attempt to deviate it would actually be harmful. Or perhaps it doesn't matter because this quality isn't a beautiful factor of biology. Humans will never be capable of caring about things that don't affect them directly. I don't claim to have answers to those yet. But one conclusion I am confident about is that when a person becomes part of the government, they do not suddenly become imbued with immunity to the human condition. One place this is evident is with our current information crisis. Local journalism is dwindling. This crisis of lack of information about government affects most of the 4,000 people in town. But the one small group that is not directly affected by this crisis is, of course, the people who are themselves part of the government.
Thank you. Anybody else? Next up, Sevian Mahar.
Hey there. So again, Jeff Reed with Sevian Mahar. Nice to see you all again. I think most of the board here is, most of the board is the same. I was gonna say you are new, but no, that's, it's after, Maria, when did we meet last? We were here in, is it December?
I believe it was beginning of December, yes.
Yeah, it was beginning of December, and we were talking about wanting to carry the Shoreline project forward. Apologies, and falls to me, the spring kind of got away from me a little bit, but we reconnected again this summer. Outline where, over the past, you know, six years, some things have changed with DEP permitting, Army Corps permitting. And I put together a proposal to basically catch us up and try to capture the tasks and the scope of work that it would take to take this not only through basically finalizing the design, we're about 90% set right now, submitting all the permits, and then running that through and offering some bidding assistance and then construction administration assistance, some site visits through construction, you know, answering contractor questions, that sort of thing. Submitted the proposal a week and a half, a couple of weeks ago. And then followed up with Maria, and she said that I'd be talking about it at the meeting this evening and thought it might be helpful if I could come answer any questions or if there are any concerns or any items that I might be able to help and offer some clarification for the board.
Questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve and allow the town manager to sign and pay out the retaining wall, pay out of the retaining wall capital accounts.
We have a motion.
Second.
Any questions? Concerns?
I just have a couple of questions. I mean, they're not, they're just kind of trivial. So what is a functions and values assessment?
So functions and values is something that's usually done by a wetland scientist in association with a wetland study. Here in this case here, we've got wetlands adjacent to the wall, where they evaluate the impact of the proposed work on natural resource and the functions and values that it offers to the public and the community. So how is this project going to change things from a natural resource standpoint? In this case here, it's not much because we're maintaining and existing. But it's one of those items that, you know, part of the new, part of the new rules is that we've got to provide a little bit more backup information to the regulators for the permits to go through. And that's one of the items. I think initially we carried a perm by rule application, which is very simple, straightforward. The tier one is a little bit more complicated, but yeah, mostly it ties to providing additional supporting documentation.
May I ask a clarification on that? So there's the end result, but there's also the result while you're building. The implications of whatever happened to the wildlife or whatever.
Sure.
Is that also included in that sort of thing?
Yes, yeah. So what they do is they, they'll take a look at it as it exists now and then as it exists or will exist once all the work is done.
Any other questions?
Just one more. I actually, I could have looked it up, but I didn't have time. What's a lighting photometric plan?
So when you're, so a lighting photometric plan is something that we provide for site plan applications. Usually if we're building parking lots or buildings and there are exterior lights, how is that lighting going to impact your neighbors, your view of the night sky? You know, do you have shielded fixtures? So what it is, is it's a, it's a study and a plan that outlines the candle power on the ground and at the property line to make sure that whatever exterior lighting, make sure that we're being good neighbors, basically.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
So aside from the permitting that your company is going to assist with, there also is the part in here about assisting the town with construction documents and project bidding. So I'm very grateful for that, for that aspect. I wanted to just kind of put out there a reminder that the project needs to be completed by December of 2026.
Right. Yep. And we outlined and we carried, I mean, we figured this is going to probably take anywhere from two to four months to complete, depending on the contractor that wins the project. The work is not overly complicated, but I mean, so I think based on what we had talked about initially, if we can go through, get all our permitting done before the end of the year and have approvals in hand, that's a great time to, the project's up to bid. And the intent would be to bid that, award it before the springtime so that they can start work basically as soon as the weather breaks.
Perfect. So it'll be done by Blueberry Festival next year?
What's the date of Blueberry Festival?
I think it's...
First of August.
First full weekend in August. That includes that Friday. So I think it's like the 6th, 7th, and 8th this year.
So maybe.
Okay. Just check.
Could be, should be, but I'm not driving the bus on that.
That's all right.
And also just a note, and I apologize.
No, I'm good.
Go ahead.
I'm good, really.
It's about how you mitigate impact.
Sure. And the timing of that.
Right.
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. We're really excited to get going on this. I came in a little bit early and swung by just, I wanted to see if things had changed or if the stack stone portion of that wall had other issues. And yeah, I mean, there were three families down there with kids and dogs. There was a kayak right there. It gets used a lot, so it, we're excited to get going on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Thanks.
Next up, Friends of Wilson Lake. Robert.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rob Rogers. I am the current president of the Friends of Wilson Lake. I would rather be thought of as a board chairperson than not the president. But that's not how the bylaws read. Is it which one? This one?
Just the HDMI, yes.
The HDMI goes in there. I turn the on button. Yeah, I think if I sit, you can see the screen behind me. So the Friends of Wilson Lake Association just had their annual meeting. July 20, I think it was. And I had to put together this PowerPoint just for that meeting. And I thought since all of you couldn't be there, that I would bring the presentation here. And I don't, I'm probably not fully prepared to answer all your questions, but I will do my best at that. Could somebody turn the lights, the house lights right off back there? Anybody?
I won't be able to see you over there.
Can you see the screen?
Not well. Either way.
Okay. We'll just leave it like that then. Nice photo by Bob O'Reilly. There are, were two loon chicks when this photo was taken. The eagle, we believe, has eaten one of the chicks, so we're down to one. But the last report was that that one is doing fine. And on the Audubon loon count, a few weeks ago, also in July, I think the 19th, there were six adult loons counted and the two chicks. So the watershed survey of 2024 included all of these people, including the, well, a large majority of the Spruce Mountain Environment Team, including Ken Baker and Rob Taylor. Rob's in the orange jacket and Ken is in the blue jacket. Everybody had a vest and Jen Jespersen is here. She's lead person and owner of Ecological Instincts, the brains behind the consulting firm that organized the watershed survey. It was a very rainy day in September, and the team were real troopers. And Alyssa, fearless out in the rain, the rain is actually falling on her in all of these photos. Here's a site on Lake Road where the shoulder is, has some minor concerns, not a major thing. This is a Bass Park site. You can see a plugged culvert there. These things are likely going to be addressed in this year. Here's a more complicated site at the cemetery. I believe this is on the docket for 2026, 27. So these are the types of things that are identified in the, in a watershed survey. Road shoulder. Nowhere is this Sector 4. I'm not sure exactly where this is. It might be Route 156, it might not be, but you can see the gravel is starting to slump right there, so there's some impact there. Over at Peas Pond on the left, this is a camp road I am intimately familiar with. It was helpful that it did rain all day. It wasn't pleasant, but we could actually see where the water was going, and it helped to identify some of these sites. Drip line on a garage, this is up at Bean's Corner. Interestingly, this garage, the north side of the eve, the north side of the building, the eve had been armored. There was, the eve hadn't been armored, but the drip line had been armored. And on the south side of the building, the eve had not been treated the same way.
What does armored?
So if you dig out a trench and fill it with fabric and inch and a half stone, you basically rip wrap the drip line so that the falling water off the eve, if there's no gutter, the drip just doesn't just keep chewing up soil.
Okay.
Yep. The watershed survey included Wilson Lake, Peas Pond, and also Varnum Pond. So this is a site in Temple in the Varnum Pond watershed. Actually, it could be Wilton. I'm not actually sure whether that's Temple or Wilton. The north side of Varnum Pond, the watershed is in Temple. The southerly side of Varnum Pond, the watershed is, and the shoreline is in Wilton. Here's, at the top of the watershed, we have Hills Pond. That's a state road site being Route 156. So that's, I just wanted to share a few photos to show what the, what the survey was like. This is Friday after the rain. It was considerably more pleasant. So in 1994, the Friends of Wilson Lake conducted kind of a septic system survey. It wasn't a watershed survey. It just looked at waterfront properties and tried to identify older or failing septic systems. That was the first kind of coordinated effort to look at impacts in the watershed. A more comprehensive watershed survey in 2016, and then the most recent one in 2024. Not quite 10 years apart. So when watershed protection is looked at locally, following the 2016 watershed survey, there was a 2017 watershed-based protection plan developed. And from that protection plan, a grant application went in, and one of these Section 319 grants was awarded. And a considerable amount of work was done in 2017 and 2018 with that grant funding. There were partners, Friends of Wilson Lake, the town, the state again. I was not heavily involved at that time. I may have been a board member, but I wasn't really following the work. It was handled primarily by Jen Jespersen and Rhonda Irish coordinated most of that with your Public Works crew and of course, the state folks. I'm honestly not sure how much residential work was done at that time, but there was a big effort for Lakesmart. And there's over 30 waterfront properties around Wilson Lake that are certified Lakesmart property. So that brings us to this current round, the phase, which we're calling Phase Two. So the 2017-18 was a Phase One project. The Phase Two project is getting its wheels going now. The grant application went in in June. Thank you, Maria, for supporting all of that. That was a fair amount of paperwork and review and meetings to get that over the finish line. We haven't heard back from DEP. DEP manages the grant funding from EPA for that program. And I'm not sure when we're going to hear about it. I'm not sure if the funding, I'm still a little bit holding my breath that the funding doesn't get clawed back in this current environment we find ourselves in. But I'm reassured that DEP would not have put out the request for applications if they weren't confident in the funding. So they did put out the request for applications and there was a response and the application is in. When we hear about it, I don't know. The grant funding is for projects in 2016 and 2017? Nothing, 2026 and 2027? That's probably not the first time I've said that wrong. 2026 and 2027. I'm only a decade behind. Okay, so to qualify for a grant, the watershed has to have a protection plan, which is really kind of a 10-year roadmap with hopes and aspirations and goals in that plan. There are basically these five areas of focus. One is to address the sites that were identified, or at least the high priority sites that were identified in the watershed survey. That's that top one. Reduce current NPS pollution. NPS is non-point source. Obviously, another effort is to prevent new sources of non-point source pollution. Education and awareness is ongoing. It's really, there's an aspect of education in everything the Lake Association tries to do. Building capacity is more about the Lake Association trying to increase membership and involvement and volunteerism. Monitoring and assessment is kind of the ongoing, and it's the effort to make sure things are happening and try to keep tabs on water quality and those concerns. So the first effort, reduce non-point source pollution. There were 76 sites in the Wilson Lake watershed. And again, the grant is specifically for the Wilson Lake watershed. It does not benefit the Peas Pond folks or the Varnum Pond folks. The Varnum Pond does qualify for grant funding, but that's a whole different program because that's a drinking water source. So these 76 sites are residential, private roads, town and state roads in Wilson Lake watershed, and they're rated either high, medium, or low impact. So those high-impact sites there are the ones that are going to get the most attention. Preventing future or new sources of non-point source pollution. There's different factors that are built into the watershed protection plan. Conservation, looking at maybe conserving more land in the watershed policy. So maybe taking a look at the shoreline zoning and the local ordinances to see if there's phosphorus control in there anywhere, if there's anything that could be tightened up in terms of policy at the local level. Training, so that might be having a workshop for local road associations or contractors that work in their shoreline zone, that kind of thing. So I'm hoping personally that we can facilitate some of that. Technical assistance, that's primarily going to be provided by Ecological Instincts. So if a landowner does want to repair a culvert or rip wraps a ditch or something and they need some type of technical advice, Jen Jespersen will be the first person to kind of weigh in on that. She has a lot of experience working in watersheds and shoreline zone, so I'm confident in her ability to handle most things. Obviously, if it's an engineering project, you would have to go out to another, another source. Buffer campaign, this is an effort FOWL is planning on implementing in 2026. A buffer is a shoreline buffer where instead of mowing and raking and leaf blowing right down to the watersheds, you kind of allow that area to grow and maybe even plant some perennial shrubs and so forth to kind of stabilize that shoreline area, eight or 10 feet down to the shore. The buffer campaign will include hopefully some subsidized plantings. So you would get a bundle of perennial shrubs and other plants that could be added to your waterfront property to kind of stabilize the shore. Lakesmart is a, I want to say it's a statewide program handled by Main Lakes. That certification again looks at your drip lines, the buffers, and your driveway, et cetera, and makes sure if your property, if you're going to certify Lakesmart, your property has to meet certain criteria. Our Shores is a DEP program, and they gave a great presentation at the Main Lakes Conference at UMF back in, I don't know if it was at the end of May or early June, I've lost track. The Our Shores program is really, it's really a consulting service that DEP has provided with those two staff people now. And they travel around the state and just do trainings for contractors that work on shoreline projects. So they address things like how to, how to, the one I was impressed with was how to rip wrap and stabilize shoreline so that it can naturalize more quickly and not just be a massive wall of rock for 20 years. Education awareness, this is a great part of the job for FOWL. Like I said, everything we do kind of has an education component. We try to spread the word about watershed protection. Mount Blue freshman earth science folks were over at Kenny Oath for this spring looking at some soil stuff. That was exciting. The CBI program, probably know these people. Olivia is now a teacher herself, and Seth is training for basically the Warden Service at Thomas College. So criminal justice and conservation law. But the Courtesy Boat Inspectors are on the, they're, they're so, they have a great job. They get to talk to people, the people launching their boats, the people fishing. And so not just inspecting boats, but building awareness about water quality in general and invasive species in particular. Capacity, so expanding membership. If you would like to join FOWL, there are many ways to do that. Engaging stakeholders and partners. So the partner, one most important partner is the town of Wilton, and we appreciate the support that's been shown for the watershed survey, both in 2016 and in 2024. And sponsoring the grant, at least for the application. Hopefully, the grant comes through. That was huge, so I do appreciate that very much. Other stakeholders, Main DOT, Franklin County Soil and Water Conservation District, the Foothills Land Conservancy. I am hoping to see potentially some more conservation at the outer parts of the watershed. So long-term to see some bigger protection. Volunteers. It's hard to get volunteers these days. Has anybody else found that or is it just me? It's like people are holding back. They don't want to put themselves out there. So if, but Lake stewardship is a group effort, so if there are volunteers out there just waiting for the right opportunity, we hope they'll come forward. Funding. So grants, membership, donations, funding. Watershed protection takes funding, and so that will be an ongoing effort. This is the culprit for the other loon chick. He lives out by the island, or she, I'm not sure which, which member of the pair this is. But another great photo by Bob O'Reilly. One of the new things in monitoring assessment is going to be stream monitoring. So Friends of Wilson Lake has a temperature and dissolved oxygen sensor, and we can take samples. We can take phosphorus samples after storm events, probably from Wilson's stream at the Pondera Bridge when that's completed. That would be a good place to start doing some stream monitoring just to see what kind of phosphorus impact is coming in at the inlet end of things. So that's kind of a new thing. The other things are ongoing. NPS Site Tracker, that's a non-point source site tracking software that will be implemented with, hopefully with the grant funding. Water quality monitoring is ongoing. I'll talk more about that in a second. Invasive species monitoring, this really goes beyond just Courtesy Boat Inspection. It goes to actually inspecting the lake for infestation versus preventing infestation. So that's not something the Friends of Wilson Lake has done a lot of, but there are things called Invasive Plant Patrol, which is a team of people in small boats and scopes. just kind of cruising the shoreline. So one of my favorite parts of being involved with the Friends of Wilson Lake is the water quality monitoring. So secay disc transparency increases vertically on the left. So transparencies of around four meters prior to 2014, and now in 2022, we're seeing transparency depths around seven meters. So we're seeing an improving trend, which is good. These are the secay readings for about a 12-month period from July of 2024 to July of 2025. And the average there is 6.2. And if you drop out May 21st, and if you drop out the two readings in October on the right, the average goes up to 6.6. So this visual is reversed. So increasing depth is compared to this slide where it's kind of increasing up to the right. This one is increasing down. This year in July, we saw some pretty deep readings. I was surprised to see one, two readings close to eight meters, one a little over eight meters. And I believe the lack of rainfall has had an impact on that. So without a lot of rainfall and a lot of runoff, you don't get that nutrient input into the lake. So you don't see the same kind of algae growth that we would on a wet year. We really didn't have a wet June. We really didn't have a wet July. And we haven't had much rain yet in August. So it's been great for Hain, but they're not going to get a third crop if it doesn't rain pretty soon. Here's Linda Bacon at DEP in her lab. Every year, the O2 meter goes to her, or she will be retiring and it'll be the new person next year. So they calibrate the meter and check it out, certify it to go another season. She's been a great resource. She also does the trainings on the lake for the volunteer lake monitors. Temperature and dissolved oxygen. Temperature on the left, so warm temperatures are to the right at the bottom, and freezing temperature is to the left at the bottom. And again, if you look at the one on the farthest left, that's March 9th, 2025. So I went out with an ice auger, drilled a hole, and dropped the temperature and dissolved oxygen meter down the hole and took a reading every meter down to 15 meters and then every other meter after that. So you see the ice at the very top and then kind of a uniform temperature all the way to the bottom at 38 degrees Fahrenheit. And then that all warms up quickly after ice out. So on the far right there, we saw surface temperature last July, yeah, July 5th, 2024, 78.98 degrees Fahrenheit. Pretty warm surface temperature. And this area here, where the warm temperature fairly steeply drops off, that's called the thermocline. And the hotter the year, the deeper the thermocline goes. It'll move down a little bit, and those warm temperatures will push over some more. So that's, and then on the right, you see oxygen. In the early spring and in November, we have a fairly stable, straight-down oxygen curve all the way to the bottom. That's when the lake is completely mixing. So there's no stratification in the late fall and in the early spring. So you see oxygen fully distributed in the water column. But as the lake warms up and you have that thermocline, the cold dense water just doesn't mix with the surface anymore. So as the season progresses, you see the oxygen levels down below eight meters, the oxygen levels start to decline, 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 until late September. They're fairly low down in the deepest part of the lake because it's trapped down here. It hasn't been able to recharge. At the surface, you got oxygen coming in from the atmosphere. You also have photosynthesis happening, so that generates oxygen as well. And then at six meters, or between six and eight meters, you have this bulbs late in the season. Again, that's an effect of stratification. The dying plankton and phytoplankton and zooplankton kind of collect at the thermocline. They hit that wall of cold, dense water, and they just sit there and decompose, which consumes oxygen. So you see this oxygen decline right here, and then it kind of increases again down in the deep water.
Rob, have you seen a difference in the temperature over the years in the lake?
Yeah, so that brings us to this project. This is what we call the buoy or in-lake monitoring. So this apparatus has five oxygens, it now has four oxygen sensors below the surface and down to 20 meters. It has 12 temperature sensors on it. This project has been going now since 2018. So that's seven years already. The equipment was just either replaced or refurbished, so it's hoped that it'll go another seven years now, maybe eight. So hopefully, 15 years of long-term data. So that data looks, oh, this is the, I'll come back to the data in a second. So this is the buoy that you see in the lake now. And then in the fall, we take that one off. We put this one on. This one, the ice can't grab it in the spring when the things are melting out. We've had trouble with the big orange buoy being carried down the lake with all the equipment with ice out. But this one slips under the ice and does not move. So that was helpful this year. That's Professor Julia Daly from UMF. She's been a partner on that project. So that, this data looks a little different. So the red line is two meters below the surface. So six feet down, this red line is temperature from last Halloween, October 31st, 2024, until May 21st, 2025. So all fall, the surface in red and the bottom temperature sensor in blue, from November 9th about? Yeah, from November 9th till Christmas, right about here, the water column was the same temperature, top and bottom. So it was a uniform temperature, uniform oxygen concentration. We're just seeing temperature here. And then after, after, by January, it's iced over. So the red temperature at the surface is actually colder than the deep water in blue. Yeah, so it's inverted. It's actually a reverse thermocline. It's colder at the top and warmer at the bottom in the winter. Not by a lot, but you can see that it holds that difference until April 22nd, roughly around ice out. And they're the same temperature, again, briefly. And then the red line takes off and starts to warm up. So the surface waters warm up, and the bottom temperature also warms, but not as steeply.
So if I'm fishing, I got to have a deep line?
Yeah, certainly in August and September. Yep, yep, yep. But in the spring, it's very similar temperatures, although it changes fast. All right, phosphorus. Thank you for your time. I'm going to wrap it up. I know you have a long agenda. Phosphorus, here are some local lakes that you might be familiar with. I have some arrows here. So there's Varnum Pond, phosphorus 4.25 parts per billion. That's an average over a long period of time, up until 2018. Here's Wilson Lake at 7.6. Last summer, the phosphorus result came back as a six parts per billion, which was exciting. We're not seeing an increase. If anything, we're seeing a decrease. Here is Sabatus Pond off the chart at 42 parts per billion. And this is parts per billion. You know, we measure oxygen in parts per million. Phosphorus, very, very small quantities, have a big impact. And Peace Pond at 14. Peace Pond is a small watershed, but there's a lot of agriculture in it. There's four dairy farms in the Peace Pond watershed. So we see, and it's also shallow. So we see a higher phosphorus level at Peace Pond.
Rob?
Yes?
What number is concerning?
So 20, anything over 20. And secay disc readings around two meters. Then it's time to panic. Yep, yep. But really over 12, you don't really want to be much over 12 either. I would be concerned, I'd definitely be concerned at 20. But Peace Pond is right on the edge and has had algae blooms in the past. This brings us to the grant money. Without crunching a lot of numbers, which I'm not prepared to do anyway, the grant is asking for 100, basically $150,000 from the federal government. The non-federal match is over $400,000, and a large amount of that is from the Sevigny-Mahar project. For proposed total effort, it says total cost, but it's really an effort because it's not all dollars. A lot of it is match or in-kind funding, in-kind value. So the total effort, $570,724, which is the sum of those two upper numbers. To break it down a little further, the non-federal match for Wilton in-kind, which is largely administrative time, $4,517. So that's matching, that's a matching amount. That's not cash, it's not a cash match. It's an in-kind match. Friends of Wilson Lake cash match up around 8,500. In-kind match around 6,233. That's everything from putting out newsletters to hosting meetings and paying for the buffer effort and subsidizing the buffers, the buffer bundles, et cetera. Some volunteer labor, honestly, I'm not sure what that is. And Town of Wilton's construction match, combined with NDOT's match and landowner match, $400,000. So a lot of the match is in that bottom line there. Clear as mud? Okay. The budget for the grant is a spreadsheet that's like 20 columns wide. And I was going to look at it yesterday, but I had to go see my mother. Town of Wilton, can't say enough about this project. This is so important, and it's going to be very fulfilling to see it come, get into gear. You can see this wall is, anyone know when that was built? Late 18th century, early 19th century? That's my guess, you know, right around the time the dam was put in. I've seen early 1900s photos of shoe shop, you know, workers gathered for a summer picnic along the wall. So it's been there quite a while, and clearly it's failing. So it'll be exciting to see that take place. Again, my presentation was for the annual meeting, so I was kind of hoping to get people involved a little more. So that's what that slide is all about. So not too late to join Fowl. Help with the CBI program, be a board member, just be a volunteer. All these buffers take maintenance, and it would be so great to have some volunteers that could help out with the buffers, maybe at Kennewatha. If you own property on the lake, you can enhance your buffer. If you're a data geek like me, there's the place to see lake data. Lake Smart program is huge. We're hoping to expand that in the next few years. And the DEP Our Shore program, a great resource. I was really impressed with those guys. So thank you. These are the officers of the Friends of Wilson Lake. If you need to get in touch with me, it's robmail@myfairpoint.net. And if there are no questions, I'll let you get back to your agenda. Do you make any questions?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very informative, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And it was the baby eagle that ate the balloon.
The baby eagle, the juvenile.
The juvenile ate the baby balloon.
That's like, hasn't been taught respect yet.
It's great that there are eyes on the water because I live in Chesterville, so I'm not always around. And it's great to hear the updates from the people that are out there. So thank you.
Thank you.
I will be very careful.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, liquor license renewal for comforted and sweets. Make a motion to approve. Any questions, concerns? The normal taxes and fees are up today?
Yes, they are. No police issues.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. Sonny, fire department update.
Well, I haven't been up here for a while, so I'm going back four months for the quarterly report. A lot's gone on in the last few months. I still have 20 firefighters, thank God, and three of them are juniors, which are in the high school program. Just got a 15-year-old that got accepted into the program. You have to be a sophomore before you can get into that firefighter program. He starts this year, very anxious to get started. So looking forward to working closely with him, juniors. We had 71 calls as of yesterday and three months back. Four structural fires, 14 medical calls. And I will tell you right up front, the medical calls are rising because of the lack of people working in nonstop. So we are going more than we ever did. I now have three EMTs, which are very helpful. But we're getting called, a lot more calls than we ever, ever did. So we're looking to maybe get a couple more and send them to a grant to be EMTs. So we'll have a little more support. Because when they call, we can't go unless there's an EMT available. I just can't go to help. I got to have an EMT with me to go. So a lot of times, we can't go. So we're looking to shake that up a little bit. A lot of the, more of the calls are CO calls, propane calls. You know, and there again, we're shorthanded during the day, bad. I mean, I have to, a lot of times, honestly, I have to call somebody from my house to come help because I haven't got anybody but me. So we're looking to change that around a little bit down the road. So that's all on the fire calls for now. We're having a lot of them, so try to keep up with them. We've started some work on the building, ongoing project with the safety, public safety building. We've done some work out in Ethan's area. And we've done some rewiring that was dearly needed because there was just so much wiring in the sews area that we're blowing circuits. So we had to put two new lines from the panel all the way in. So that's done. So we're starting to do some painting, redoing of the station, which is looking good. So we'll continue, do what we can. Truck maintenance. Ladder seven is going, hopefully, by the end of the month, out to Lake Region. And only for to realign, readjust the cables. After so long, in use, whatever, the cables kind of stretch out a little bit here and there. So we have to go and have them re-titoned and realigned. So that's going to hopefully happen. But I'm not going to send it until I get the ladder recertified, which should be recertified again by the end of the month. To do that, we team up with Farmington, and we have an outside, meaning an out-of-state company come up and recertify. So they do Wilton, Farmington, and this year, Jay's going to be involved. So we get the better price, which helps. Engine one has problem with the air leaking on the braking system. John has got it pinpointed, so we're going to tackle that in the near future. All the other trucks are doing good. We're keeping right after them, so that's a good thing. Training, we just have a lot, a lot of training. We do training every month for at least four hours. And some of the elite training, like hazmat, confined space, like hazmat, confined space, all kinds of things that we have that are one-in-two-day projects. We have a hazmat coming up. That's the most important one we got. That's coming up in October. There again, we double up with Jay. Okay, we do it together. It's a big price tag for outside trainer to come and do that. So we go and M M A gives us, we go for a grant and we get it most of the time. And then E M A has money for training, so they give us some. So, you know, with the balance, it's pretty reasonable between Jay and Wilton. We split the cost. So that's gonna happen in October, but we gotta start it now, so. Okay, and we've started working on specifications for the new truck down the road, replacement of Engine one. We had started, well, quite some time ago. We kinda put a hold on it and, and worked on the budget instead. That was more important at that time. Right now, the, the timeline for them, anywhere from thirty-six to forty-eight months after you put your, you know, your paperwork in to get it built. Farmington is working on that fourth year of that truck that hasn't come in yet. It's been over three years. So we're gonna start working on it now and we'll keep you updated all the way. But we gotta start somewhere and it takes probably eight to ten to twelve months to get that all put together. So we're gonna be working on that. And then the next thing I got is, as I told you, we're really shorthanded on firefighters during the weekdays. So, and there again, we started working on that, but we put a stop to it the same way that we did on the truck to work on getting two per diems for next year. All the information. So we're all aware of what it's gonna take to get them. Everybody around us has them. Everybody. Even the small, some of the small towns have them because of the lack of firefighters and that type of thing. So we will pick that up and continuous and we'll keep you guys informed all the way. Grants, we're doing pretty well on grants. We did get the grant for cold water suits. We got that through the M M A. We put in for three cold water suits and we did get it. Cold water suits are only good for ten years. Hours are up beyond eight. And they're pretty expensive. So we're very lucky to get three. So I'm very happy with that. We're putting in an exhaust system, the Paul Event, I think they call it, through Stephen King Grant. And what it is, it's an exhaust system. It's a system you put in your station or in a big garage or whatever. And you put your, where your muffler and tailpipe come out, you hook that to it. When your vehicle is working inside or running and it goes through this purifier and takes the C O two out of the air. So we're gonna put in for one of those. Then we're putting in SEEK units through Walmart Grant. SEEK units are small cameras, thermo imaging cameras that go on the front. That will be for the interior firefighters. Instead of the big ones that we have to hold and everything, this one here is right on the front of you. It attaches right there. So we're going for eight. That will take care of most of our interior firefighters. So that's about all we got for grants. We got a lot more we'd like to, but we're just gonna hold off, put these in. And we will be putting together a, one for Cyberside. In the last three weeks, we've had two calls to go use Cybersides, either go get somebody that's in an accident or missing persons or go on Tumble Down Mountain for rescue. So, and I hate it like a son of a gulf and I can't help you because I don't have access to one. So we thought we'd put it in for a grant to try it. Won't do anyhow. And we're working with the sports place right in East Wilton. They've done, you know, layouts for them, them type of Cybersides for fire departments. They're gonna kinda help us, guide us through the system and stuff and how these other departments was able to get grants for them and stuff. So that was a very good thing, so. We'll be going through that. And the last thing I got, I wanna say, Blueberry Festival. I thought it went very well. We had some, some little mishaps there, but I had to use one of my firefighters, the whole Blueberry Festival, to cover for medical. Nonstop somehow because of lack of either personnel or trucks or whatever, wasn't able to put one over here during the, during the, at least Saturday. So we used one of our Cybersides, which they let us use from Power Sports. And I got one from Osgood's. And we used one of them for the whole Blueberry Festival and one of my E M Ts. And they did a real good job. We had three to four calls and we took care of them. So I was very, you know, proud of them. But the Blueberry Festival overall, I thought went very well, very well. I don't, I, I, I loved the thing for the kids. That was great up there. Had a lot going on for them and there was a lot of kids. And also talking about kids, when we did the fire truck rides down in the square, we had probably three hundred kids that we give rides to.
I heard you all afternoon.
Yep. And we had East Sticks Field come over with that truck. And we had the Ariel and our Engine one, and it was steady from one o'clock to four. We didn't have a break at all. And that's what we was looking for, so. So any questions? I've talked enough.
Nancy?
You have thermo imaging that you wear?
Cameras?
Yeah.
Yes.
So is that to find people or for you to know where your people are inside?
No, no. To find them inside, they got a, a, a unit on them that if they don't move within ten seconds or fifteen, this alarm goes off.
Okay.
So we know where they are.
Okay.
They're in trouble.
Great.
Either in trouble or, or they're hung up or something. But we know. But the cameras, like you say, can look over in the corner and, and they can see the heat image.
Okay, super.
And very, and we have the handheld ones.
That means your hand's busy.
Right. And you can't really do too much because you got one in one hand. And you can't put it down, they're all done. And they're very expensive. They get lost very easily. So, but that's why people, Farmington's got them, loves them. Jay's got them and likes them. And they're only this big, just like this here. Pretty narrow, just like the page up, only just a little bit bigger. And they got the screen on it so you can see it. Ideal. They're probably a thousand apiece.
Okay.
So I'm putting in for eight on the grant. Hopefully I get it.
Thank you, Sonny.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sonny.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Can those cameras see through walls?
Yes. Wooden walls.
Okay.
Next up, review of and approval of the police R F Ps. First off with the Cruiser. Police chief is recommending the Cruiser from Quirk at forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and another twenty-one thousand, four oh one seventy-nine from Tech, Island Tech Service of Maine for all the gear that goes on.
Smooth.
Seconded.
Questions, concerns? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Next up is the R F P for body cameras. And if you read it, the chief would like us to reject the current proposals and go back out to bid to get more vendors applying.
Do you need a motion on that? I move that we follow Ethan's suggestion.
Recommendation?
Recommendation.
I second that.
Any questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
I'll make a motion that we do the appointments as listed, Betsy, Kathleen, Michael and Peter.
I second it, that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Ms. Town manager, you wanna give us some Maine municipal update?
I'm sure. So every year, Maine Municipal Association sends out a ballot. It's the election of M M A Vice President and Executive Committee members. On the ballot this year, Vice President for one-year term is Anthony Ward. He's the Casco Town Manager. The Executive Committee members for a three-year term, which are proposed by the M M A Nominating Committee, is Phil Crowell, the Auburn City Manager, Suzette Francis, Lubec Town Administrator, and Mark Leonard.
Vizi?
Town Manager, also Chief of Police. Thank you.
So we'll be on Bangor, heading to Bahaba. Keith?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ballots as written and authorize the town manager to sign them on behalf of us.
Seconded.
Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? It is unanimous. The next regularly scheduled upcoming meeting of the Select Board is August nineteenth. I may not be here. I'm on an A T V trip, but I'll safely try to get back. If not, Keith will have it. Any other business of the Select Board? Nancy?
We didn't vote on the police interceptor equipment.
We did, that was padded up.
Oh, that was part of the?
The car, the Cruiser.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yep, that was all in one.
Thank you.
Two separate. Were you able to read back that motion? Sorry, I apologize.
For which one?
For the?
Cruiser. Cruiser and the equipment from Island Tech Service.
So it's Agenda number nine?
Yeah, I had the police Cruiser was recommended by Quirk.
Mm-hmm.
That one. And then I didn't have the next one. I missed that one. And then the motion to follow Ethan's recommendation to not accept the last one.
Okay. But there's the Cruiser and the equipment was included in that? Okay.
I heard it said, but I didn't understand.
And they had me second guessing it, so.
Okay.
Yep. No, that's why I read off Island Tech Services of Maine.
Perfect, thank you.
So any other business? Managers' report.
I'm sure. So Blueberry Festival and thank you for the comments regarding. My understanding is that most everything went smoothly. I wanna just say a huge thank you to Renee Woodard, our events coordinator, for making, for working through all of the details and bringing the community together this past weekend. It's clear that she puts a lot of effort into coordinating all of the activities. I also wanna thank all of her family members who stand by her and are here during the festival to assist with her and all of the volunteers as well. The Public Works Crew, the Fire Department, Police Department and all of the staff, employees, for their assistance throughout the festival and leading up to it. There's a lot of coordinating that goes in. And there were a lot of people here this weekend. We'll be coordinating a post-meeting with department heads and Renee to discuss this year's festival here within the next couple of weeks, hopefully by the end of this week, but here soon. I met with the county and other local municipalities regarding the regional A C O position. As you may remember, last fall, I believe the town sent a letter in support of the position to Commissioner Saviano for the county to apply for the Betterment Grant. Unfortunately, we were notified by the county. They did not receive the grant. As a result, the county asked if we would still be interested in applying for the grant again this fall. Krista Powers is our current A C O and she's doing a fantastic job. She even works for a few other municipalities. And it's my understanding that the town would still be interested in sending a letter of support alongside this grant resubmission to apply for the next round of funding